Okay. Public discussion on the island's agenda. Sorry, read the national.
I always get them japping.
Appointed board of commissioners chairman for 2018. You want to be chairman?
What's looking at me that day?
I just want to be number three. I don't care how you guys do it.
You don't want it again?
I can take a year off.
Huh?
I can take a year off. We used to do it that way until Doug had a problem.
Don't you compare me with that?
Make your turn.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Huh?
I'll let you off for a year if you want it. If you don't, you can have it tomorrow.
I'm not, I'm not making Jay as chairman.
Okay, I'll say again then.
Dirty, you didn't have to say it.
You must make me vice. You got a wealth. Does it matter? Do I kind of owe myself?
I like that. I make the motion if it needs to be made.
Jay chairman and me vice, is that all right?
That's the way I like it.
All right, yeah.
I mean, I don't care how you two do it, I just want to be...
Welcome to the courthouse, Jay.
See, and I can be gone and he'll actually do it.
Well, you got to write down, right? That would say all the favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I don't know, we figured I was going to...
I have some, when you come to sign the checks this afternoon or whenever they're ready, I have some monthly things that if you want me to chase you down at every payroll, I will. If not, Toby and I just do them up ahead of time.
Right.
It's for the...
Yeah, you got to sign checks now, don't you?
Yeah, you got to come up and sign checks now.
She want to rescind your... Writer's crap. Okay.
That's why Toby's in the deckers. He signs the one end.
Oh, he can move down here, but I'll just put him down there and he can sit here next time.
No, you just keep doing what you're doing for today.
Yeah, I'll do it today. Yeah, there's some stuff we have to sign all the time or anything else, yeah.
I know.
You'll be all right. So you're out here in town, you can do a lot. They can call you a lot quicker than calling me.
Yeah, that is kind of more convenient because I can run by.
I just don't believe what they call Jason.
Oh, I've heard a lot of things they call him.
A lot of different things.
Okay, so...
They call me Tom D.
We could have a new fund for breakdown for sales tax. Sales, yeah. That's pretty simple, isn't it?
Just got to make note of it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's all? That's it? I told you it wasn't that.
This is new cash fund for breakdown. Breakdown for sales tax, cash sales tax, Z911.
Yeah, the new account for that we need to go into, right?
I make a motion to approve.
And it will be a cash account, so you don't, I'm sorry, did you make that motion, Toby?
I made the motion. I both said second at the same time.
You can take whichever one you want.
So you don't have to do a budget for that or anything, and that manual will just carry over each year and stuff? But there won't be anything in there until March?
Right. That's what you were saying, it's a delay of course or...
Yeah, yeah, it's a delay.
But I'm sure we'll have to discuss it at length at some point, but...
Yeah, January, see, January, February will show up March one.
January's will show up in March. February's will show up in April. We're two months behind on the... She gets them the next month, the time when we appropriate them, we're getting them the next month. Okay, well, I'll go. Thank you, fellas.
You're welcome. Thank the animals.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
Ain't that done yet? Ain't that done?
What?
Ain't New Year done already?
It's the...
You can still say it.
First business day, you can still say it.
January 6th. Commissioners, commissioners. Yeah, you could have off easy, Jay. You could have sat down there. We'd have 40 or 60 row cross appointments. I was stamping them, Linaida was signing them.
That's good for you.
Hurt my elbow. That's where you just get more beer and go like that.
Keep it, keep it.
Keep it deliberated, yes.
Keep deliberated.
Were you looking at New Place yesterday and watched the ballgame?
I stayed home. I stayed home all weekend. I went to church.
And the rough hidden cave in?
No.
Okay.
We picked it up in there just like we did here.
Yeah, I think Mama wasn't happy with Miley. She took her in the back.
She set the line up so it couldn't see you.
I know, I know.
Poor thing.
Because I looked, I was going to look in there, God darn, she turned the light off.
And she has a big face, is that her?
I was going to get her a conversation with me. Farmer's table open today?
I would assume, but I'm not going to.
Oh, yes. And the Sonic, I don't know what. But it looks pretty good compared to something I've had in there.
It's even better.
Yeah.
Hey, good morning. I'm great.
So where's Kyle at?
Putting the paper together, so he says, he said his desk.
Putting his paper together, so he said, huh?
We have to have it together today and we had work yesterday.
That's to me, I don't know who it is.
You might be bawling, I'll tell you again.
Did they win or lose?
That's, that's good.
Probably then, maybe that's double overtime.
Yeah.
Move was definitely...
I didn't.
Second. All favor?
All right. All right, that sounds good. Thank you. You bet, Melissa.
I'm on the address, huh?
Getting famous.
Amano, where's your family? I already have. Somebody's always getting an address.
That's a good thing.
They're in Jessica, they're getting theirs pretty soon. Land and called me, they asked me for Melissa's number again, so they should be getting those around their house.
So they changed where they lived or what?
The building, their house.
Land and Jessica building. Where'd they get the money at? Mom?
Guess they might as well be in debt now. Wait a while, they're building their own house.
You get pooped at all?
That's who that, that's who that was.
Back again, Dad. Well, yeah.
My daughter and son-in-law.
What's his name?
Landon.
Landon King, he wanted to change the...
Yeah, she said, she said Brandon, but it's Landon. And she didn't know his last name.
Where's that?
Chandler Lander.
West Coast curve. Two, two miles. Mountain, Cameron, Mountain.
Mountain, down on the old case play.
Yeah.
Charlie North, old play.
Did I really get no money?
No, I think part of it's wrong.
Part of it is, yeah.
They were worried about the stop sign. I think Landon made a call and you stay on top of the two of those stop sign. There's trucks flying through there.
You think they're going to stop?
And the other way is kind of a blind corner.
It, it is.
So he was going to talk to, uh, stay on that stop sign.
I think I've only been a mile down that road.
And your Ange's house?
What? Yeah, Ange's is right there, the first half mile, just down there. Maybe not even a quarter of a mile. It's not too far off the highway.
But hers is back in there, except that's somebody else.
No, they're just right on the road. That's Kathy and Ron and Melissa's, whatever.
I don't know if he's building a house. I think, so like you, well, you guys, you went a perfect way to do it.
I like this barn houses because you can build a barn, put all the material inside where it's dry, you can work on it.
Was that one of your Bob tail?
What?
Catch the brakes on it?
No.
Can't be worn, you know, all the new ones.
Well, it was on a trailer.
Oh, oh, oh.
What's the problem? That was the problem, it was on the trailer. We had quite a little argument at the county barn about what was wrong with that.
Oh, you did?
Between Mike and Judd and truck driver, we got a little loud.
Did you win or...?
I just sat there and watched. You can ask Linaida, they can get pretty loud. Just know that Mike and Jack can get loud, right? Tell us they were stupid and ignorant and other names.
Those are nice names. They'll be a good name.
Right, yeah.
Now, were those Judd's stepdaughter's or son's?
Well, the boy was his son. Him and...
Oh, really?
Him and, uh, I don't know.
Evans, uh, he...
Kenny, yeah, that's his son.
Oh, really? I haven't seen him in forever. I don't recognize him.
Yeah, the girl's stepdaughter. Yeah, I was his son.
Wow. He's a nice little kid, man.
He's teasing, he's trying to, he's halfway nervous or scared. I don't know. Yeah, I can't think of his name.
Oh.
I don't, Judd received it, but that's his son. Right, is that girl's name? R-A-T-N-T, right, I don't know how they spell it, you know, Zaylin was starting.
Zaylin's weird, yeah.
Yeah.
They had to come out and work one summer and I'm like, okay, you're going to spell your name, your name for me. And he started spelling Slavichek. I thought, I can handle Slavichek. I can handle your first name.
Did he, did he work?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And he came out with a voice several times at work. They were fun. Good help. I didn't think he was on a Saturday, no, they were out of school on Friday, they came up for Friday. And he didn't think he was going to come back, so I went ahead and paid him for Friday and then he came back Saturday, which was fine.
Well, those guys' boys at work. Because I hear them talk about it takes what to do, especially Grandma. Long game in that Sharon Mutual account, I don't know.
He told me yesterday that...
But they didn't have school there?
I don't know, they didn't ask about it.
I don't like, we play ball, guess not school.
He is a coach.
He is a coach.
Yep, yeah.
It does hear the, like, ceilings are, and televisions started back today. I know ceiling did.
Maybe the boys were getting uncomfortable see last year.
So Sharon Mutual might have, that's all I'm saying there.
Huh?
I said ceiling went back to school today, so Sharon Mutual might have. We don't go back till Thursday here. I would have sent them this morning.
If the door had been open.
Actually, they, they've been doing good at chores, so Caleb's probably still going to have that.
They don't seem to stay on, you don't know what school is going to avoid anymore.
Now, right here, that's why it pays to buy good diesel. It just cost me that to put injectors in one of my Mac trucks.
I guarantee you.
Worked five grand.
Hold draw, hold draw with the fuel.
I don't know, I just, I make good fuel, save a lot of injectors.
Oh, yeah. A lot of fuel filters he got by.
Those additives make a lot of difference. Unless they put the additives in, that fuel's still dry.
And put it in with the function regulation to order kid baby, you know.
You're breathing.
I know.
That's your pacemaker?
No. My battery ain't dead on that. Shut up, Toby. Don't say a word.
Can't wait to talk the barn out of that one. Interesting. You got leases. You know, Empire Financial Service, Lawton, they were trucks, you never know who's going to have the lowest bid on that.
We get a certain depth at this time, don't we? If Jay moves down there, Toby moves here, I can move there, then I won't have to be between them when they're fighting.
That's what I would do, stand, you know, going down with those two just have their...
It's three, two, one, we go one, two, three, next one.
There's times I get a little nervous sitting here.
We don't get, we don't get no fights. Everything's done in harmony.
It's pretty good.
Every time we're at a ballgame, we get accused of everything.
No reason to get along so good if they're on camera.
Oh, they ain't as good as they used to be when Mrs. Grover would come.
Oh, she's related to me, yeah.
The cucumber ladies?
Yeah.
Yeah, you are, you are related, girl.
Her, her and Doug would get into it pretty good.
Remember, Dan, you can choose your friends, you can't choose your evasions.
That's it. Yeah, Carol. I moved down here and I was related to more people than I was up there. I try to get away from relations. Shouldn't tell you that on camera.
I doubt if anybody really goes on the website to watch these. I used to. I, I referred to, so far I've referred to it once, but I couldn't remember what happened. It's as exciting as watching toast.
Yeah.
Mrs. Grover was here that I used to watch it. It's all good, she's already dug, she looked at Chad. I talked to you in school, you're all right. I don't know who he is, he's all right too. Told Ducky one. Okay, there we go.
She started to run, didn't she? For an election.
I don't know. Jay missed one, did he?
I did.
Too much alcohol, New Year's Eve, huh?
Not at all. Just keep them coming for you, Jay. Just keep them coming for you.
I know, it's hard. Got to think about that. Don't worry, I have my checkbook secure for a month, one day.
How old would that Judd's son be? Thirteen, fourteen?
He's gotta be, you know.
He's gotta be in there on. Go.
Yeah, I was piling them up for you.
Okay. Still can't think of his name, nobody.
These are all single, single signatures.
That was a simple name.
They're out of the woods, yeah.
Uh-huh. I don't receive, I don't perceive the job, I see Debbie will have it. I don't even know where Katie lives now anymore.
She's not married, I'm hungry for her.
You should, I'd say somewhere around the city or Edmond or something like that.
Who's that?
Katie Evans, that's Mary Judd's long shot.
Yeah, I remember.
So Vasek is a...
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
All favor? Blanket purchase orders. You pick two?
And one for two. District two.
One for district two.
Wow. One couple on top for the sheriff and the rest on the fairgrounds.
Couple on the sheriff?
Yeah, don't sign those.
I ain't going to sign. Are they together all right now?
I think they're probably copies.
Please motion to approve.
This office solutions up for the sheriff?
Yes.
I guess we're not done yet.
No, not likely. We got the motion on.
Yeah, if they get in there, if you're going to get them in this group. Trying to start up mid-year by staying awake and meeting.
Yeah, supposed to be favorable.
I had to ask somebody this morning if I would score that Alabama game. I've been asleep before I made it all the way through here.
What was it?
Twenty... Twenty seven to six, what is it? Twenty-four, twenty? I got to know what they said there.
I started it, but I want to sleep. I want early.
Sure you want to do this one? Sheriff, keep publishing company.
No.
She's nice.
Throw it out. Kyle was not here till he came back.
Yeah, Kyle's here. First of all, we've got a lot of them, don't we?
Try some. Where's Kyle? How would we get lucky today?
He's at the office at his desk. I don't know where, I guess putting the paper together, I really don't know.
You tell him, he can send you.
We don't have to let it know that Bull is being here.
Oh, that what?
That Bull. Second is that.
All favor? Yeah, throw across the permit.
Oh, I should have saved it. Should have saved it on that one. Scotty's phone off, that's...
I got to say, uh, still...
It's still trying to download, or...
Yeah.
Toby, that's what was going to happen, didn't I?
You knew how to get your shit off the straighten.
I don't know how to shut off.
Can you try?
I'll try. Yeah, and when Toby gives me fits too. I know.
You don't ever want to hand anybody, try and make a score that poor, do you, or what?
Who seconded the blanket purchase orders?
I just want to turn down the sound, sound before somebody calls. I just put it in airplane mode. I'm supposed to block everything.
To have it black everything out.
Well, then I can still use it as a camera if I have to.
Oh, yeah.
I figure if it's important, I'll pick it up after the meetings or whatever. Voice mail, texts will come in. If not, I'm blissfully ignorant. Well, good, got to check this one. Oh, yeah. I still remember carrying a little of dimes so I could make phone calls. I'm trying to ask somebody for a dime, make a phone calls, I could get home, yes.
Maybe put a map, might put a map.
I don't even know if it takes time.
Thirty-four, twenty-five, twelve.
If you can find one.
Yeah, my friend.
Yeah, Mike's friend, the travel class as well.
Yeah, yeah. I'm glad they paid this.
Alpha has a...
I went down there and caught them doing it without paying. I made motion to approve. Hmm, guess so.
Second. All favor? A lot of times I'll put them in there for goodness sakes.
Yeah.
They'll call you ahead of time.
That's a good captain there doing things right.
Who was it?
Midstate.
Oh, Midstate, they're pretty nice.
I like this guy.
About Tulsa.
They put a driveway in there, they didn't put a cobra in it. A guy stumbled down, we had a driveway right up...
Propagation.
They didn't have a cobra in it? I could see, he said, you put a cobra here, we'll put one in ours. That's, that sounds fair enough to me. Ours was going to stop all the water.
They're going to have to change all these to 2018.
Yeah.
That's got to 18, this one didn't, this didn't.
First of all, they had an answer on the dates and stuff.
We're going to sign this one, we're going to... Together, right?
Yeah. We're signing the question. The treasurer's office. Change those. They put the seventeen on it, didn't they?
Well, I know one has, one had eighteen written on the rest, I'm going to say seventeen, which is, yeah.
It'll take me three months to get changed, girl. It'll take me three months to get changed.
I usually don't have too much problem with that.
I did last year, but I cut sixty-five this year and it's like...
You're a little ill, are you?
My clock's beat just...
Okay. Can I come to meetings tomorrow? Is Jay coming?
Um... Sheriff, so that's what I'm trying to do too. Both of you can come.
That's your duty?
The... Tax is what, then we have a tax write-off for Olson.
Yeah, that's what you love about them.
I can come, Jay, the next time you can do it.
Whatever suits you, just take a length on it and do it.
They all gonna be here.
I haven't heard from any of them.
They're not even meeting, are they?
Well, I'm special, I don't want any money from them.
Right.
I emailed Melissa and Herb, and I mailed Colonel Dix, but I don't have a good one. Did you see that Kathy Hughes come here? Or they'll...
Didn't they? Wasn't the paper going?
No, it was on Facebook.
Huh. What'd he get married for?
I couldn't imagine.
He wants, he wants some insurance, or what?
Went to Melissa and Marx, and he would have been late, he would have missed it.
Melissa and Marx. Oh, oh, okay. It was a short, sweet wedding, wasn't it?
It was a very close wedding.
Little guns.
One lady says, "I'm gonna stay in here for a while longer, it's like to warm up." She hasn't warmed up yet. And at the reception, another building, and they go back outside, though, it's cold.
Well, we had a few of them more, that was the boys called up, they got to the cemetery.
There was one that, the tents were up at Helena, there was...
Um...
Joanne Henderson.
Not Helena? Well, I mean, last week?
No, this last Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday was up. Oh, this was at Helena, the Helena Cemetery. The tent was up Saturday when I went.
I don't know there. The one that built it was Sharon Hamlin. Angela King, well? Is it Angela Hammer?
Yeah, let's see.
He said that her and the three girls showed up, and Dad got out of prison or whatever, and he showed up. Well, Dad's supposed to be in prison. Yeah. I think I signed them all in a bit right spot this time.
Practice makes perfect.
Uh, no. I had to slow down, pay attention. For what?
Yeah, I moved, kept your appropriations, I seconded.
All in favor? I think it was the monthly officer report, right?
There, there's two.
Excuse me.
She doesn't still go, still?
Says she's a... Getting braces for a kid. Hopefully. Yeah, I need it. Well, I like a brace deal. Do you want to skip the highway expenditure, but you do?
Yeah.
Well... Battery in science class for two men, one of those lantern batteries, had a couple wires on it. Kid walked into class one day and stuck his...
Oh, my goodness.
He got red, Josh.
I bet he did.
Then he couldn't get the wires off.
Oh, my goodness.
Not too smart.
No. My brothers used to chase me down and, um, put the radio antenna to his mind because they said that they could get better reception. You can't not, stop it!
Gotta lick all that gluckin' over there. I remember we kept it, so I put my...
All in favor? We'll go down the allocation, I'll call beverage tasks, she's... Harold Vixen's favorite subject.
No, I still think rather like you, we need to change one of those.
We need to, uh, put, put them in wrong.
This is your last one, remind me this afternoon, and I'll do that.
Yeah.
Make it like twenty-five dollars more. He would notice.
Oh, yeah, he would. Oh, yeah. Thought it was a little as well. Four hundred and some dollars, must be four hundred and some dollars difference. Who, who did the appropriations?
Appropriations was J. M. Stanton.
How about the monthly highway expenditures?
Tell me that again.
Oh, I haven't heard of that yet. Monthly officer report, how about that one?
Monthly officer report was J. M. Stanton.
Oh, J. S.
So what'd you say?
J. S. Oh, now, alcohol beverage tax was in?
They're without him.
Okay. Make a motion, sec.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. That was TNT.
TNT.
Toby and Turner.
Toby and what?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Now you got me all mixed up.
Calm down, Toby, calm down.
Tell me turtles, is that what you said?
Turner.
All right. Now it's burn bad. How long I want to put it on?
I left, I'd say I left a blank, Scott, you have no idea how long you guys want it to take.
Oh, my gosh.
Just do a whole damn month?
I kind of what I got in mind, if we do a month, then we can cancel the dang thing anytime.
That way, that way, we won't have to keep calling for somebody to work.
Yep.
Everybody else, right?
So do it until...
Be...
February fifth, so it'll be January second to February, then February fifth is on Monday.
Yep, that, that'd be...
Nobody's griping about it, or...
Oh, one or two.
Oh, you got the same one or two that want to burn a little pile of limbs and...
They'll go out there and hide them some little hole and burn them.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it'd just take this month, month is the best deal, everybody think. You think so too?
Sure. Till February one.
Yeah, but I'm gonna have to say.
Three thirty-six days.
If it don't rain by then, we're in trouble anyhow.
I'm telling you, if it don't rain by then, we're, we're in trouble now, but it would be a lot worse than that.
That way we won't have to keep doing it, because we could always take off.
Then I'll just put it on that, that you can cancel it within seven days.
Some of the others have put them on now, I look at them.
Did Woods County finally do it, that's the only one down and around?
That's the only one I don't know about.
Oh, about Kansas, what? Major County did? They're pulled out, I don't understand why, it's just as tender for them. Yeah, yeah.
Um, what did it say that was certified to?
Yeah.
Thirty-six days.
Well, there are consents over there, it doesn't bring a good, put one on, 'cause people go ahead anyway, and nobody's ever been prosecuted over there, find anything for it.
Is she gonna be here to do this, to some assault or doing this or not?
Uh, you...
Well, they'll tell her. And if she's not out today?
Yeah, she may not show up today. She may not show up today.
She can do it.
Well, but just let the need take it this time.
And then you want to, it can be removed during the seven-day period, the same method, is that what?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Who made the motion, your buddy make the motion?
I'm here.
Second.
Stan made the motion, you're second?
I'll, I'll make it.
All in favor? All right, now we got the monthly highway expenditures. Boy, this is coming weird. I'll be signing the wrong spot, I don't know how long.
Well, you can go ahead, and then we can get them.
Hell, you're in.
We're all signed this, we just...
Just me.
Yeah, get your stuff up down there.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
We'll save the six months bids for last, okay? Right, you. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for filing fair board elections, January twenty-second and through twenty-sixth. They file out there or here?
They file in my office.
Yeah.
And then you'll have your election. Now, I put on here seven a.m. to seven p.m., is that what you want to do on your, if there's an election?
I think, I think that's about what we got to do, isn't it?
I think last time we ended it earlier.
Like five-thirty or whatever.
Normally, I don't know, I think it's been like a... We've only done it...
Well, so we didn't used to have a...
Oh, I've done it twice since I've been here, so... Um... The election will be the thirtieth.
I can't remember, because we, down there is the only we ever had, right?
Been several years, if they have anyone here, I know that.
No, they haven't, no. I was thinking when Chris Parker, and she not ran against anybody when Croft got on?
Seven to seven, that's fine.
Yeah, seven to seven. The filing period will be the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, but it has to be five days, so we can't do it that week, that time, because it's just a holiday there. And I went ahead and ran it in the paper three times then, because we had that extra week in there.
They file in your office.
Yep, and you have, what, right in?
It's already on the page.
Woo!
Sorry, what?
It's already on the page to go.
We're gonna have to tell Kyle, she's more...
No, we vote on...
I do the legals part.
More efficient than he is.
Can we get a vote in to keep her?
To keep her?
Can we just get...
You'd probably make me come over here, we did.
Would you put that in the papers, we made a motion, not to let Kyle come?
No, he would put that in the types of that.
Probably wanting to, since it's my mom's agenda. I don't foresee, we didn't know he was gonna get hurt.
I don't foresee, yes.
He's probably in mourning anyway, over the ballgame that night.
Which probably what it all had to do with, is he didn't want to come.
Pretty easy.
I make the motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, I rest my last deal.
Just on the bottom that I let everybody know about it, I got a little memo, it was typed up for everybody, so I'll send it out to all of them. Everyone that knows.
Is that one that used, is it more than used to be?
Yeah, one's fifty-three and a half, now it's four and a half.
It's four and a half, okay.
We're all signed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a second.
I wish they gave us something weird, that we had to choose what...
That's what I was thinking.
Just publicize it.
I make the motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we can go to six months bid. Okay. Okay, Form One. Concrete. District, District Three's gonna be...
Alva for, if you want to do...
District Three's gonna be painted.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, well, it wouldn't come either. Which is, I, yeah.
Motion?
I'm making my motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, looks like that.
That's good.
CJ.
Did you get one? You need it worse than I do.
No, I don't need it.
Keep them straight.
Okay, half, half inch, three bar.
Sunbelt.
Sunbelt. Five-eight, three bar.
Those, those, lowest?
Lowest.
Sunbelt.
Sunbelt, yes, I agree, lowest. Sunbelt, I want a gay, gay, gal standing in place.
They're not the lowest.
Well, we had a problem with doing this, though.
I don't, I was just saying that they're not the lowest.
Doug tried this one time, and Parks didn't get there for the bridges and everything else, because they did it, that's why.
Yeah, and, and sunbelt to deliver a heavy road, or whatever you need, get a railroad yard, make you get all low.
Yeah. That was a problem. Doug, you know, this one, this one, this one, this one, when you tried to, when the bridge builder showed up, like, nothing, not all was there. That's the reason.
Sunbelt's about got everything else covered.
Standing place forming. Twenty-two gauges. Oh, painted standing place, sorry.
Yeah.
Sunbelt, dollar fifteen's what I said, what'd you guys say?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the reason? Same as above?
Lowest, yeah.
Yeah.
That seems about, well, you know... Seven on five-eights, but thirty-nine.
Sunbelt.
Yeah, lowest bid. Nine to five-eights, but...
Sunbelt.
Right.
Low bid.
I'm gonna put you in this damn gun, put my stuff back in. I agree. Nine and three-eights, a four hundred, a KNO, right?
Yeah.
New ten-inch paring?
Sunbelt.
Sunbelt. New structural steel?
Sunbelt.
Okay.
Lowest bid, possibly.
Are you structural steel per pound? Then the same reason on, I don't want you to sunbelt, is because of, get it all in at one time? You do it like we did...
You deliver it.
More like, whatever you put on the other one up there.
Yeah.
Because it's just a pin difference. You still plate this railroad yard? You doing all right, any of you?
Only bid.
And new, new steel plate, KNO. The new guard rail, the same as, that was before, the reason, the reason we use sunbelt? What I said.
Use guard rail, sunbelt?
Yeah.
Yeah, you say. Uh, twelve gauges, weight per square, I would say railroad yard. I think I'm right on that.
Yeah.
And, uh, ten gauges. Uh, no.
No. Sunbelt.
Sunbelt.
Okay, yeah.
Lowest. Lowest in the best bid.
Oh, those?
Yeah.
New green jacket. Second.
We ain't done yet, oh, we did, didn't we?
We gotta do any...
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm sorry, all in favor? I'm not used to... Oh, boy. All right, I already went through it. It was pretty small, but I got it off my computer and got it. He's got.
And then you're trying to do it on your phone. It can be really small on your phone.
Huh?
It can be really small.
I know, but I thought, I went to the county branch and I got it going. Call it to you. Did I, did you, did you get it, Stan or Jay?
Nope, I didn't get it.
I sent it to your secretaries. I don't have either one of your emails.
Well, I'll fix that.
Well, you gotta give it to me or you don't get it.
I have it. Just send it to me. I haven't caught it up to.
Yeah, it's all right.
They can give me their emails.
All right. M.C., it's eight hundred, is it? Eight hundred blade mix summer. Never heard of that, have you? Asphalt field supply, guys?
Uh, I guess I'm, I'm not using any of it.
I don't know where the money's go. Still gotta do it. It's two cents cheaper. Price. Now you've been around me too long, right? M.C. three thousand, chip and seal.
Coastal.
I agree. AC seven point five. Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Because that's all, all, all better. M.C. thirty seventy priming base.
Coastal.
M.C. two fifty blade mix spring fall.
Coastal.
H.F.B. three hundred. Thirty fifty hot tar crack sealant, no bid.
No bid.
C.R.S. one, no bid. C.R.S. one X, no bid. C.R.S. two, ergon, one seventy-three, and this one eighty-one. C.R.S. two, chip and seal. How you doing? You all right? C.R.S. two H, no bid. C.R.S. dash two P, chip and seal. Dollar ninety-four coastal. C.R.S. two, chip and seal. Dollar ninety-six coastal. C.M.S. one, I'd say coastal. Must be the damn gum, lady.
I think it is.
C.M.S. two, no bid. C.S.S. one, no bid. C. one H, no bid. S.S. one, tack coat. They're both the same. Could be given a chip and seal too there. Most coastal.
Coastal.
Well. Should be whoever we're using for the, if you're buying a chip and seal, you know what I'm saying?
We gave one of them to Urbana and the other two to.
Yeah.
Console some.
We really don't need a tack coat, but.
No, you, you really don't.
We're gonna have to name one of them though, right? Let's go to coastal.
I'd go with coastal.
Nice your guys. We don't usually use tack coat. What reason, what reason won't put in there?
Kept every reasonable in there, just sir.
Yeah.
What's the difference in the difference of the oil?
What?
Well, that would make a difference.
Tell me what's the difference in the difference of the oil from hard going to coastal.
Probably nothing.
Have they both come out of coastal?
Well, where they all come from.
Well, coastal comes out of coastal than we've been getting.
But we don't, we don't use tack coat.
No, no, but I meant as far as the other one, you're better off to go to coastal anyway because of the mileage or the cooling factor of the oil.
So you use that right there. Sounds good to me.
Which one did you go with?
Coastal.
S.S. one H, no bid. M.S. two, no bid. M.S. three, no bid. Other embossments, I don't know what the hell those are.
Well.
But C.D. seven is cheaper.
Give it. I'm not going to give it.
Well, yeah. With the marriage and all this stuff, we don't have to mess with, do we?
Okay, so it's not a bit.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
I've jumped through this.
Nobody yet. I'll make a motion to accept.
Me, I'll say give it.
Okay, all in favor?
I thought I missed it.
Because I'm sitting here, you know, when I went to work for the county, you just had three sets of three different kinds of oil. You didn't have forty-five. I was like, what is this stuff? You know, it's all, try to figure out. This may change now. Well. Well.
Sorry, I guess I just felt I'm tired of doing that bit when I was.
I'll talk to you next time or whatever because we'll get to limestone, one, one spot and let's hit rock on another, right?
Hit them in the other, yeah.
Instead of, yeah, that's all right. Clean screening is number four, limestone.
I'd go with de lacy out in it because mileage.
Location.
Location, that's correct.
Oh, how many she's got to say location, but one's on them?
That's, uh, which one's right there on?
Limestone.
Limestone.
Okay.
Wait a minute, did I do that wrong?
Yeah, you're right. Let's see, put a, put a L above this one.
Yeah.
Okay, this is limestone.
All three, all three of those, de lacy ones.
That's limestone too.
That's limestone.
Anything de lacy is limestone.
De lacy's limestone. No, Martin.